Thank you very much Chair Chairman Costello and Council folks. Really appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this morning about the upcoming budget for Visit Baltimore. And I'm going to be real brief in my comments and I know Peggy Daddak is my partner is here as well to give her conventions and her update. But Bob, if you want to put the slide up now, that might be a good point to do that. Well, I'll just give you a couple of quick highlights. As all of us know, all of you guys know tourism and hospitality, we've really been impacted by the COVID pandemic and the recovery is really going to take some time for tourism. However, we also know that tourism is a big economic driver for the city of Baltimore as well as the state of Maryland. Prior to the pandemic hitting in the early weeks of the crisis, we, our team was really preparing to unveil a very transformational rebranding for Baltimore and we really wanted to put a new light on our city. However, the pandemic really forced us to put a pause on that launch of this national marketing campaign and we didn't feel it appropriate to roll it out. This campaign though, which we have and at the right time, we will roll it out. We believe it's going to be transformational because it gives Balt- it shows Baltimore a very inclusive light, really showing our destination, the excitement about our destination for travelers as well as residents. There was a really big emphasis on neighborhoods and really wanting people to feel welcomed and invited to our community. As all of us know, Baltimore City being a majority African American city, you know, we really have a unique opportunity right now to really showcase the rich black culture, history, heritage of our city. Great entrepreneur spirit here in the community, great arts community and really at a time when promoting peace and eradicating racism is really, really important. It's on the minds of a lot of folks globally. We think at the right time, that's a message that we want to step up with and to help. However, the real important work that we really would like to do at Visit Baltimore, it's been a pause, it's going to be put on it to a certain extent because of the budget constraints, which we understand. We've had to make some extremely tough decisions from a staffing standpoint because of the pandemic. We, just to give you an idea, we had to lay off full-time seven people. We did eliminate three full-time positions, so that really gives us 10 full-time positions that were eliminated. Forty-two part-time people were eliminated for this entire fiscal year and 12 full-time people we will furlough beginning July 1st for three months, first quarter of FY21. So our budget for FY21, it's going to experience a 40% cut over last year. And as a result of this, I just want to give you a couple bullets of where our marketing efforts will be impacted this coming year. Number one, we will not be able to do any national advertising campaigns. We're going to really focus more on local and regional marketing efforts, at least through the end of 21. And unfortunately, our visitor center doors will be closed. We've also had to cut back our public relations agency of Ruckert that we had to, that really helped us create a lot of positive press. We're going to halt that through the remainder of this year. Also on the sales front, our sales teams will be really limited in their presence in the trade show space and other sales missions. Locally, from a marketing perspective, we're not going to do as much as promoting local festivals and other iconic community events that we've, we've done in the past. And our foundation work, we've actually put a pause on our foundation, which is our arm of raising money, giving money back to folks who are looking to grow their careers in hospitality industry. We're not going to be able to really move that forward in the short term. And the last thing, our branding, our marketing efforts at a lot of major cultural events such as South by Southwest that we really wanted to launch this year, we're going to have to put that on pause as well. So our focus is going to be more local and regional this year and just want to make sure I'm really clear with that messaging. And our team will be meeting really in short order to refocus and repurpose the focus of Visit Baltimore for FY21. So Mr. Chair, I'll leave it there for now. I'm sure there'll be some questions at the right time.
I think you're on mute.
Good morning. If you could put the slide up for the Baltimore Convention Center. Good morning, Council, and I appreciate the opportunity to bring you up to date on activities at the Baltimore Convention Center. The slide you see in front of you shows what we had anticipated for FY21 pre-COVID. We had anticipated approximately 94 events, 593,000 attendees and approximately $9.8 million in annual revenues to the convention center. Since March of 2020, we have been shut down except for the field hospital that has been taking place in the Baltimore Convention Center, so that we have not been hosting events. They have a contract with us until September, the end of September of this year, and they have two options to extend for three months each time. We have had conversations with them and they have indicated that after the September deadline, they are going to opt for at least one of the three options would take us until December of this year. Before we had that information, we had anticipated potentially having events start in August and that would have given us a 40% reduction of events in the convention center as well as revenue. However, with the option to extend with no events in the convention center until the end of December at this time, that is a dramatic decrease in revenues. The Budget Bureau Department had anticipated that if we opened back up in August, we would have $5.7 million in revenue for the year. We anticipate that if we go until December with no events, that would drop us an additional $2.4 million in revenue and an approximate 44 events that we would not be hosting as well as economic impact of $32 million of economic impact that would be lost. If they go to the second extension, which would take us until March, we would lose an additional 27 events, an additional $2.7 million in revenue and an economic impact of $43 million. So we rely approximately half of our events on what Visit Baltimore and the sales team bring to the convention center. Approximately 65 to 75% of our annual revenues are derived from the conventions and trade show industry. Our state officials obviously are very cautious, as they should be from the medical standpoint, that we can't open up the convention center for events at this point. We are trying to find out if we can at least put a pause on the hospital with our average patient input right now is about 10 patients per day and we have 250 beds. So we're hopeful that we can work with the state officials to see if we could at least find some way of using the rest of the convention center for events. And we are working, my team is working on a reopening plan that will take under considerations the guidelines of social distancing and the things that we have to do to make sure we take on the recommendations of the medical community. But we, at this point, are looking at approximately more than a 40% reduction in our revenues and our number of events if we go until December. I will take any questions that anyone would have. I also want to remind everyone, the state of Maryland, through the Maryland Stadium Authority is a partner with the convention center. They provide 2/3 of our operating deficit and so that is something to take under consideration that the state would fund 2/3 of the deficit that we would have. That is in effect until 2029. Thank you.
Thank you Peggy. Council Vice President Middleton. Vice Chair Pinkett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My first question is for Al and I know that, you know, we are still adjusting the numbers, but as it relates to, you know, total number of visitors, total hotel taxes, has your team started to do projections on what, you know, what we anticipate the future to look like and put any, any numbers to that?
Well, what we do know, and again, none of us have a crystal ball, right, as to what, what the real future holds, but what we do know that the impact on hotel lodging taxes between now and the current year-end is going to be somewhere around $7 million in lost revenue just from hotel business, right? Last year, visitation numbers, we just got those numbers about a month ago, 27 million folks visited Baltimore. I think it was about a 1 or 2% increase over the year before. So, and we hire a third-party company called Longwoods International that gets that data for us. So Councilman, I think looking at the next year, I mean, it's very realistic that from an overall visitation standpoint, the numbers could potentially be less. I think what we're, what we're hearing from the travel trends and industry is that some folks, until there's a vaccine or sometimes type of medication, they're going to be a little less reluctant to getting on a plane. Not saying all people will, so I think some folks will get back on a plane soon, but it's going to be smaller numbers. So I think those, those numbers will, you know, impact Baltimore's visitation numbers this year. But I think the good news story is that we know there's a lot of pent-up demand from a visitation perspective. And so we're located in a good spot for that drive-in traffic and a part of what we're going to do from a marketing standpoint, once we're getting to the point that we know we're going to reopen, is that we're going to really deep dive on that, say that 100, 200 miles an hour visitor that lives in Richmond, lives in Virginia Beach, lives in Jersey, Pennsylvania, that may want to get in their car and drive to Baltimore and take advantage of our great culinary scene, may stay at a hotel. We think that drive-in traffic is a, is a market that we can really tell our story to, market to, and hopefully get them to come see us. But we're, we're staying close to the numbers. I'm talking to my colleagues from around the country on a daily basis and, you know, I know Peggy's doing the same from a venue perspective, but I think it's going to be a slow comeback, but I think the leisure visitor, as well as our local residents, can help us in the short term to come see us and take advantage of the great assets we have to offer. The meetings and convention side of the business is going to take a little, it's going to be a little slower coming back, but I'm hopeful that at least by the first quarter of 21, January, March, we're really going to start to see better movement. This fall, I think it's going to be a little slower traffic.
Thank you, Al. And this isn't a question, but just more of a statement. And I was encouraged to hear you talk about the potential that our city has as relates to the rich African American heritage that's in our city, as well as the diversity that's, that our city's known for. And so I'm also encouraged that you see that as a strength and something that we can build around and hopefully restore some of our visitation traffic as a result, you know, that city, that Baltimore can really reflect where the nation is shifting. So, thank you.
Well, Councilman Pinkett, if I could just add to that comment, I think we're at a very important intersection in time right now. The pandemic obviously has had a tremendous impact on travel and tourism, but now when you couple that with the social justice protests and conversation that's being had around the country, I think that's a conversation that we should not back away from. And I've talked to our Chief Marketing Officer about coming up with a plan that we want to share with the council at the appropriate time, that a destination like Baltimore, with its demographic, we are in a leadership position to carve out a story that people, not just African Americans, but all people of conscience, they're going to want to go to communities that they feel welcome. And we should be celebrating that and I think we have a huge opportunity to tell that story. We've always told it, but I think we can really tell it in a much bigger and deeper way because we have so many great assets. There's a great African American story here, great African American talent, and if we can couple all that together with the leadership of the council and the administration and others, I believe there's a marketing story there that we can put out globally and we can show the whole world that Baltimore is a city that gets it. We're concerned about eradicating racism. We're concerned about justice for everyone and we're also concerned about economic justice. And economic justice means people should come and spend money in communities that they feel welcome. So there's going to be more to this conversation and something that I'm talking to my counterparts that happen to be African American across the country about this issue. We cannot take this lightly and we can't take a backseat to it. So I can tell you, as Visit Baltimore, we're going to be a lead on this conversation moving forward.
And the CIAA coming to Baltimore is going to be critical, that we be really poised and positioned to, to make that a real celebration. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank, thank you, Councilman. Vice Chair Pinkett, and I just want to kind of add, I'm just elated that Mako is, instead of canceling their event that was supposed to take place in June, that they are working with Visit Baltimore to reschedule that in November. We know that Mako had to unfortunately cancel their summer conference that takes place in August, but we're going to hold on and hopefully November, by November, that'd be a nice kickoff for, just to help Visit Baltimore. And I think because I just happened to have been, to be the president of the organization that because we missed the summer conference, we didn't, we definitely didn't want to miss bringing the commissioners and council members from around the state here to Baltimore. On that note, I'm just going to kind of go through some of the council members to see if they have any questions and I guess we'll start with Councilman Burnett. Are you still on board? Do you have any questions? Councilman Burnett? Councilwoman McCray? Do you have any questions? Councilwoman McCray?
No, thank you. I don't have any questions at this time.
Thank you. Councilman Henry? Do you have any questions? Councilwoman Sneed?
Yes, I do have a question with some of the layouts being, and since we are big marketing and this is what we're promoting Baltimore, I'm just wondering what the racial makeup is? How many people do we have who are Black, who are on a team that are promoting and with the makeup is for the whole department?
Councilwoman Sneed, you're speaking of both Visit Baltimore and the convention center? I just want to be clear.
Visit Baltimore.
Visit Baltimore. I don't have that right in front of me. We can get that to you, but I believe our breakdown from an African American perspective, I think total organization, we're in like the mid 40s from a breakdown, total organization-wide, but we'll, we'll get that number to you in case I'm off. But what I will say on that, that our senior team is extremely diverse, African American, with our VP of Membership, our COO, and I would think not many organizations in the city of Baltimore have both President and CEO and COO that are African American. So I'm sort of proud of that leadership, but our sales team is very diverse from a people of color perspective. We have a person on our team that's dedicated to the African American convention market. In the marketing space, we spend a large percentage of our budget in the African American market as far as to the leisure visitor. So it's, it's top of mind for, for us, Councilman Sneed. In fact, it's, it's one of our core values as an organization. We have four core values and one of them is celebrating diversity. So it's important for me that it's a part of our DNA as an organization and we make sure that we're diverse from a staffing perspective. When we hire, we look at it through that lens as well. We have interns that we make sure folks are, people of color are part of our internship. In fact, our creative firm that we bought on board to help us with our rebranding, Bellweather, we said to them, in order to get this contract, part of what they were going to need to do for us is to hire an intern of color on their dime to help us in this rebranding. And to their credit, they did that. And that's something that wasn't mandated, but it's something that we felt as an organization was important for us because A, not, you know, obviously Baltimore being an African American city is important, but it's also the right thing to do. It makes sense. And so our organization definitely always looks from a lens of being inclusive, being diverse, and we know that from an African American lens, we need to make sure we're representative in people, but we're represented in storytelling as well as our money that we spend with vendors.
Yeah, and that's exactly why, and that's why I'm asking, because if we're talking about marketing in the city, I just want to make sure that we have people that are of color that are a part of this. And so there are definitely people that are part of the marketing team that are, that are Black.
If that's a question, that's yes.
Okay. I would love to see the numbers. If we can make that a question and have that sent over, that would be great.
Sure. We'll make sure you guys get up the breakdown.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there any other council members that have a question for Visit Baltimore, the convention center? If not, I want-
Madam Vice President, I'm back. I had to speak at a graduation, so I-
Hello, Council President. Go right ahead.
Thank you, thank you. Al, thank you for all the great work and all the stuff that you guys have been doing. And I'm sorry if you probably covered a lot of this, but I know that you guys are seeing significant, significant cuts and just wanted to see from you which are, which of the cuts you believe are going to have the, the most impact on your ability to actually bring people to the city, which of course will also have a adverse impact on the city and our revenue, et cetera.
Thank you, Council President, for that question. Great question. To answer it, I think it's twofold. I think in the short term, the impact on our budget cut has been in staffing. And I mentioned we've laid off about 10 people, furloughed 12, laid off 42 part-timers. And because of that, we're now going to have to reposition our organization to where we focus our messaging, where do we focus our deployment, because we're going to have fewer people. So I think in the short term, it hurts from a staffing standpoint, but it also because of the limited hotel tax collection that we're, we're experiencing, it's going to force us to go more into a local and regional marketing efforts moving forward. And so we're going to really go after the leisure visitor, that drive-in traffic that I mentioned earlier. So our story won't, will not be as broad-based. We're not going to reach as many people that we would like to meet in the short term and that's going to help, that's going to hurt us as far as probably visitation numbers could potentially go down. So that's the short term, but the really significance in the long-term because of the budget cut, because we're in the business of promoting Baltimore three and five years down the road, when the economy will, will improve and come back, because of limited resources, it's going to really threaten the business that we're trying to get three to five years down the road. Because we're, Peggy's team and my team, we're promoting Baltimore out into the future and because of that and lack of resources and competing with DC and Philadelphia and Boston, New York, Nashville, we're going to be somewhat handcuffed. And, and I'm very concerned about that because I'm in the business of not only feeding the hotels, but also our culinary scene and the great museums we have in Baltimore has a workforce development component to it. So I think that's something that we have to look at and I'm hopeful that as recovery comes in, there may be some kind of adjustment and, and spin in tourism moving forward because that's a piece of the puzzle long-term. We don't want what's happening now in 21 because of the pandemic, that because of lack of funding in 23, 25, we don't have business because we weren't able to get into that cycle of decision-making because we didn't have the marketing dollars to do it. So I think it's a real balance that we need to look at and make sure at the right time we reinvigorate that tourism push and give it the resources it's need to make sure we're strong three, five, seven years down the road than we are today.
Yeah, and a follow-up to that, Al. Have you talked to, I know you often do it, to your counterparts in the other cities, especially ones of white signs and see, have you seen what's happening with their budgets in comparison to what's happening to yours? Because everyone is crunching.
Yeah. Great question and that their budgets are taking similar hits. Unfortunately, their budgets were a little larger than my budget, so, but, but they are, they are taking a hit. But what, what we're doing, Mr. President, and my colleagues are doing, we're still looking for some, the ability of federal money, the stimulus packages that came out, 501(c)(6)'s like Visit Baltimore, we didn't qualify for. So PPP didn't, we don't qualify for that. So we're hopeful in this next package, just being worked on, the HEROES Act, that 501(c)(6)'s in cities and states will be a part of it. My colleagues, some of them have been able to get some stimulus money to help them reinvigorate tourism as we speak. And I think that's the, the one area that I'm hopeful, that if we can identify some federal money that we can put back into tourism, I think that would be helpful as we move forward.
And then just, just a follow-up because we know that we, where, have you guys had any discussions with CIAA and how that's going to look now and whether, you know, it's going to have, COVID is going to have a drastic impact on that because we know we're just not sure with sporting events on how they're going to look moving forward. Have you had any discussions about that? And also, in addition, does your budget reductions impact your ability to do things related to CIAA as well?
Well, your second question first, our budget does impact what we do with CIAA, no question. However, I talked to the CIAA's-
Sorry, Al, how, can you explain how so? How is it impacting?
Well, it will, if CIAA happens the way they want it to happen, part of our budget was going to be needed to help pre-promote the CIAA around the country, to tell people in the DMV and around the country about the CIAA. It's the first time they're coming this far north in 15 years. So we were going to take some of our budget to help the CIAA in that marketing message. We're going to have to regroup on that because there, there's no money to do-
How much is that?
I don't know off the top, Mr. President, I can get that number for you. I can get our overall budget to you.
Thank you.
But really, here's the issue with the CIAA right now. I, I talk with the commissioner of the CIAA once a week. We had a call with their 12 presidents two weeks ago. Number one question that the CIAA schools are asking themselves and they have not answered yet is whether students will be on campus in the fall. The HBCUs, as you know, they have a different model than the majority institutions and this pandemic is impacting the African American community at a, at a disproportionate manner. So they, they're asking themselves some serious questions about students on campus. They're not there yet. We've asked them to come back to us by the end of June, no later than after the 4th of July holiday with the plan. of July holiday with the plan as to what they are envisioning. I think a couple of things are out there on the table. One is to go full-blown with the tournament like they envisioned. That's one option. We're not sure if that's going to happen or not, but that's one. The second option is a smaller footprint tournament, maybe in a smaller venue in Baltimore City with fewer schools, instead of 12 schools, maybe four women's schools, four men's schools. That's being discussed. There are no decisions yet. So having it in a smaller footprint. And then the other option that's just being discussed is whether or not they go totally virtual for '21 and then redo a contract for Baltimore for '22, '23, and '24 with live basketball. So I say that to you all just to say there are conversations being had to be strategic. CIAA sees Baltimore as a partner, and Dr. Bro, obviously at Bowie State, being a host of institutions at the table. So we don't know which direction yet. Everything's still on the table, but I wanted to be very transparent with the council that those conversations are being had.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Al. And Peggy, for you, just, I'm sorry if you answered it already, but what, how, what is your projection or forecasting looking on like conventions? You know, not just six months, a year out, but like a year and a half out? Like what is the conversation like with folks? Because I think that... And also, have you talked to your counterparts in other cities, you know, people starting to reimagine the way that we do conventions as well?
Yes. Thank you for asking that question. First off, we got to get back open. With the field hospital in place, the state is reluctant to close it down. And I'm not sure if you heard that I mentioned they are going to exercise their option to take an extension that takes us into December with no events taking place. What we're trying to do is propose, and my colleagues from other cities are doing this, they're mothballing their field hospitals because we have shown that there are very few patients. We have 10 patients in the building. Let us mothball it and at least start a reopening in the other parts of the Convention Center. And that's going to take the governor to release that. We're already 40% down based on the activities that we have projected. We've moved many events into later part of this year as well as next year, but if they go until December, it will have a drastic effect. They have a second extension option that takes us into March. And if they take that option, that will directly impact CIAA and all the events that we have scheduled. So that would take us a year with no events. So we have been talking to our colleagues. My team has a reopening plan that we're ready to start the implementation if we can get open in August in some way, shape, or form. We want to feel that, have our customers feel comfortable coming back. We realize that it won't be as robust, but we need to get started. And that's a lot of jobs that are impacted by not having the Convention Center open, not just the jobs that are part of the city system, but all of the vendors, our business partners that give us revenues that are not working now, and any of the economic impact that we have on the jobs in the hotels and the industry in general. So yes, we're very anxious to get open. We're very anxious to get started, and we have been making plans for that. So we just need the governor to let us do that.
Mr. President, if I could just add to Peggy's comments, and I think we really need to think about this mothball sort of concept. There's a precedence for this around the country. Los Angeles Convention Center, the Denver-Cotterado Convention Center, both will field hospitals. And because of low capacity, they didn't shut the hospital down, they just put it in a mothball status. They allowed their sales teams to promote and sell their other part of the Convention Center so they can continue to get business. And if, and "if" is the operative word, if the second wave were to come back, then we just closed the building down like we did before the pandemic. So I think there's an opportunity here for us to look at a slow opening, doing what we need to do from a health perspective. But venues around the country, and Peggy and her team, to their credit, they've put together some protocols that we believe can make people feel comfortable to come to Baltimore City. I think we have an opportunity to really look at this seriously, and if we can open up slowly and host these 40-something conventions between now and December, I think it'd be a big economic impact for all of us.
DC down the street will be reevaluating whether they are going to proceed with the hospital at all. They have 450 beds they've never used. And they have been holding some events in the other part of their facility. So right now, they've got events on the books starting in October, and my guess is they will get started.
Thank you. Thank you. And that's the information for me so we can have in conversations with the state. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have one question. Do we actually know how many hotels are even open? Is there a number that you can give? Either one of you? If you could answer that.
I know that Hilton is closed until the end of July.
Yeah, I don't have an exact number for you, Councilman Middleton. I would say the majority, probably 90-plus percent are closed today, but they are having conversations about reopening. Many will be reopening in the middle of this month, and I think the rest are looking at reopening toward the end of June, getting ready for Fourth of July holiday weekend.
Okay. Because I knew, I can't remember which one, but I knew there was one that decided to open for people that I guess was tested positive for COVID but couldn't go...
Lord Baltimore.
Okay. But other than that, you're saying that the majority of them are still closed?
Correct.
Which is kind of devastating.
Yeah, but I think this month, we're starting to see a slow comeback in reopening of the hotel community.
Okay. Thank you so much. The Visit Baltimore and the Convention Center are just so very important to this city for our economic growth and many other, many other things. It's just, you guys are the key to just bringing people together, bringing people from around the globe to this wonderful city. And I just appreciate your efforts in trying to continue to do what you do the best way you can. So thank you for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to bring it up to date.
Chairman Costello?
Thank you, Vice President Middleton. I just want to echo what the Vice President said. We have got to find you more money, point-blank. This year's appropriation, while I understand why it is what it is, cannot continue beyond this year. The function that you provide is just critically important. The hospitality sector is the third-largest sector of employment in the city, and the overwhelming majority of those people that are employed are city residents. So we want to talk about getting people back to work, getting them in jobs. This is one of the ways that we do it, by supporting Visit Baltimore and by supporting the Convention Center, ensuring that they're funded healthfully so that they can continue to attract people to the city, spend money at our restaurants, stay in our hotels, those restaurants and hotels that employ our city residents. So thank you all very much. Colleagues, are there any other questions? Okay, we are going into recess. We will be back at 12:30 for the Mayor's Office of Human Services, which I believe will be the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success. Yeah, actually, no, this is Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, not Mayor's Office of Human Services. And whoever's in the building, there will be lunch. Pardon me, hang on. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I misspoke. Mayor's Office of Homeless Services. And for anyone who's in the building, we will have lunch at 12:00 in the Curran Room. Thank you all. See you shortly, 12:30.